All right, so I will call to order this city council business meeting and we will do roll call start on your end, councillor.
Steve Platt.
Megan Norris, she/her.
Megan Perkins, she/her.
Melanie Kiefer, she/her.
Mike Riley, he/him.
Oriol Mendez, he/him.
Gina Franzosa, she/her.
Great, so we're gonna start on our good of the order section tonight and we have a message for the community. I had drafted something and sent it out to council today. I just wanna check in with everyone that we're okay for me to read that on behalf of the full council and then everyone else will get a chance to also make a statement, so I'm seeing agreement to that. So I'm gonna go ahead and read my statement and then I'm offered the chance as a councillors to make additional statements. Yesterday, the council completed our goal-setting retreat during which we worked together to develop priorities and goals for our work for the next two years based on our values and extensive community input. I'm proud of the work we did and I look forward to continuing the next steps in the process of developing our budget and our work plan. But I want to acknowledge it was a bit surreal to do that work in the midst of a blitz of news about rapid and extreme changes that are coming from the new presidential administration. So tonight, on behalf of and with support of the full council, I wanted to speak to what's going on at the federal level. It's important for our community to hear from us as leaders about what is happening in our country right now. And it affects us here in Bend, all of us. So I wanna start by highlighting that many community have been experiencing uncertainty, fear, and frustration due to the rapid-fire changes in federal immigration policy. I will state unequivocally tonight, the Bend community is strengthened by our immigrant neighbors who play a role in enriching our local economy, culture, and social fabric in countless ways. What we do know is that the immigrant community and especially our Latino community is living in fear right now. And this is by design as changes in favor of increased deportations and rolling back protections like DACA are meant to instill that fear and division. We have heard from people individually and from groups that people in that community are afraid to send their kids to school, they are afraid to go to work, or to even go get groceries. And when those living in fear like that in our community aren't able to live their lives doing things like going to work, building homes we need, providing food we eat, working in our healthcare system or providing other services we rely on, all of us are impacted. In 2017, the Bend City Council unanimously approved a resolution declaring Bend a welcoming city, committing to fostering a welcoming environment and treating all individuals with compassion and respect regardless of race, ethnicity, place of origin, or citizenship status, and encouraging all to contribute to the collective prosperity and security of current and future residents. Those commitments have not changed, and today, your city council reaffirms those commitments to making Bend an inclusive, welcoming community where everyone feels they belong. I also wanna be clear that the city's policies follow state mandates, prohibiting the use of city resources for federal immigration enforcement. The Bend Police Department officers are trained and adhere to state laws that restrict cooperation with ICE, such as not honoring ICE detainers that are not a judicial warrant. We remain committed alongside our governor to upholding Oregon's Sanctuary Promise Act, a bipartisan law that was passed in the 1980s. The targeting and dehumanizing of immigrants is just one example of strategy by this new administration to return us to an era where people do not have equal rights, where discrimination is a regular occurrence, and where people live in fear of being taken away, blamed, erased, or attacked simply because of their identities. When the president signs an order saying a tragic plane crash is the fault of DEI, he means it's black people's fault, it's a woman's fault, simply because of who they are. This language must be called out for what it is, racism and bigotry from the highest office in the land. The attitude, language, and actions of this administration in the last two weeks are also specifically hurting our queer community, especially trans children, our immigrant and refugee community, our black and brown community, our Jewish community, and more. And when these community members are targeted and living in fear, I wanna be clear, our entire city is worse off for it. I firmly believe in the purported values, that the purported values of this administration are not the values of the vast majority of the Bend community. They are not our Oregon values, they are not the values of this council. To all those who are targeted and scapegoated right now, we see you, we support you, and we will continue to speak up for your human right. We are facing an unprecedented amount of change at the federal level which seems designed to sow confusion and to break some of the crucial systems that support our everyday lives and prosperity. So I wanna lay out some of those direct impacts of the administration that are gonna have on the people of Bend. Attacking federal agencies and ending federal funding and grants will directly and severely impact following important services that are provided here in our community. It's a long list, get ready. And this is just some. Meals on Wheels free service for seniors, veterans services like suicide hotlines or help with their benefits, basic assistance for families including help for women and children to buy food and necessities, threats to Medicaid. There are 1.4 million people in Oregon on the Oregon Health Plan, 28% of people in Deschutes County, 57% of children in Deschutes County are on Medicaid, homelessness services including vouchers for housing or help with addiction treatment and behavioral health, services for domestic violence victims or children who experience abuse, and funding and assistance for our law enforcement's ability to catch perpetrators of those crimes, support for wildland firefighters, services that support and empower at-risk youth, and even transit services for our region. Additionally, the following city projects are examples of those that are under threat of losing support and funding that was already granted or that should be available to our community in the near future. Funds to help people in Bend make their homes more energy-efficient and climate-resilient, wildfire mitigation efforts in partnership with agencies like the Forest Service and the BLM, infrastructure projects like the Green Market Crossing, the Hawthorne Bridge, and the Airport Control Tower, and our pro-housing grant to get affordable homes built in the community. All of those are under threat. Listen, all of us up here have sworn an oath to uphold the Constitution, and I wanna make no mistake, there is going to be continued legal attack against any orders, even those that come from the president, that are illegal or unconstitutional. We cannot accept that these attacks on our federal institutions, federal funding, and our federal workers are normal or obviously legal. They are not. So what can we do? Based on the past two weeks, these next years are gonna be difficult and uncertain. But we are in it together, and I am urging people to please stay connected, stand up for our Bend values, and keep our local progress going. That's how we're gonna weather this storm together. Your city council is aligned, we are ready to work for all of Bend. Many in our community have already reached out to me and others, asking how they can help and what they can do. And I remain inspired by the amount of people who are engaging with us, even the people who are critical of us, because it shows that our community really does care about the future of Bend. We urge people in Bend not to give in to fear, despair, or cynicism. And when you're overwhelmed right now, lean into your community. Make a small positive difference with someone you know. Connect with your neighbors, meet up with your friends, take jewelry you can find it, go outside. Stay in control of how you consume social media and news, and make sure to check your sources and keep other people accountable for theirs so you know you're getting the real facts. You can also organize, volunteer, and support those groups that are providing services to community members in need. Those organizations especially are gonna need your dollars and your time in the coming months and years. And finally, please raise your voice in your personal circles. Please show your solidarity with people who need your solidarity right now, saying, "I see you, I support you, you are valued." It means a lot. And then raise your voice to your state and federal leaders too. Let them know, we expect them to do everything in their power to protect our democracy and our federal institutions which we know help so many people and help keep our country safe. The city council will continue to stand up for our community and we will push back against orders and directives that are not legal, but we're not gonna be distracted from the work in front of us. We still have streets to fix, and neighborhoods to plan, water and sewer pipes to build, emergencies to respond to. The city of Bend will not only stick to our values, but we will continue to provide the services our community needs as we meet this moment. And please join us in supporting and strengthening our community ties. At times, the news feels like a five-alarm fire, and it may be, but we have to hold on to our humanity and our empathy, not just for our own sakes, but for the sake of our economic, social, and community prosperity. During this uncertain time, we will support our neighbors and keep doing the work that is in front of us together. Thank you very much for listening to all that. I had a lot to say, I found, when I sat down to write this, and I'd like to invite my colleagues also to make any statement that they feel is appropriate. I'll go to my right first, councillor.
Thank you for writing that and taking the initiative to make it happen and giving us a chance to look at it. I just wanna make sure it's clear, I fully support what the mayor just read. And I wanna just make some comments to three different groups tonight. First, to immigrants in the community, I too am an immigrant, so I just wanna say that the attacks that are on you right now feel very personal to me. My whole family immigrated, except for my brother who was born here when I was younger, and it goes back a couple generations in my family, people immigrating from Europe. I know immigrants in our community are valuable members, and that you make our community stronger, and I thank you for being part of Bend. To transgender members of our community, one of whom, I know someone in our community who's trans who is born at the same time as my younger son, and I've watched him evolve and become a full adult. I see you, I value you, and I respect you and your rights to thrive in our community. Thank you for being your full selves and being part of our community. And then for the people who serve immigrants and transgender people in Bend, I wanna thank you for the work you do every day to support our whole community. Your work is especially important today, and it uplifts all of our humanity when you do that work. So thank you.
Thank you councillor Riley.
Thank you for that. A hundred percent support and appreciate those comments, and I especially appreciate the reminder of the oath that we took to uphold the Constitution and the laws of the United States and the state of Oregon as well as of the city of Bend. We've been asked, what are we going to do? We just finished goal-setting, we had a very productive couple of days and good conversation, and I think we need to stay focused and double down on the work that is in front of us, as the mayor said. I do believe that is actually one of the best ways that we can support people whose identities are being targeted, who are being attacked. It's to do things like provide them with an affordable home, to make sure that police and fire are there when they need them, to make sure that they can afford even things that maybe aren't on the top of your mind, things like your water bill. I toured the wastewater treatment center, making sure that even things that are out of your mind are being treated properly, and that people have a safe and reliable way to get to work, visit from family and friends in a community in which they feel they belong. I think that's very important. That's the work that I see that is ahead of us, and I think we're gonna be doing everything we can to pursue it.
Thank you councillor.
Mayor, for making that statement. And I also just wanna say that I a hundred percent agree with what our mayor said, and I look forward to working with all of my councillors and everyone in this community to keep our community strong and close. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Platt.
The things that you said in the statement that I really agree with, Madam Mayor, is and was highlighted by councillor Mendez, is the oath that we took. And as a veteran, that really resonates with me. And I just want to remind my fellow veterans that we did swear an oath to support and defend that Constitution which establishes rules-based society, and that's our job. And I don't consider that job to end when you're no longer serving active duty in the military, that's your job all the time. And part of what we're doing here is we're maintaining that rules-based society here by showing that we can locally function, and we can locally produce, and continue to keep us safe. So thanks for all that we're doing.
Thank you. Councillor Norris?
Yes, I just wanted to say that I totally support your comments in your letter, and it was well said. And just as a child of a father who was born in Mexico and immigrated to this country, it's really important to me and just really hits home what is going on nationally. People are living in fear, and like you said, they're staying at home, they're not going out. And neighbors are reporting on neighbors because of the color of their skin, or they look suspicious in our community. And it's not okay. And so I took some time, I spoke with the executive director at Latino Community Association today. And I think it's just really important for our community members to know their rights. In particular, one thing that's very common is people have to have a warrant if they're gonna come into your home, into schools. And there are legal resources that LCA can offer and connect you to those organizations. They also really stress the importance of families having plans in place. It's really important that if you are taken, that your kids know where to go. So just make sure LCA can also help you formulate those plans. And I just, I really support our community. I'm very concerned about the fear and chaos that's being spread in our country. It's not what we stand for, it's not what our community stands for. And I just think now more than ever, it's important that we all come together and make sure that our voices are heard.
Yeah, your words were so powerful. I don't wanna dilute them too much, but I'd like to amplify a few things. I think we keep talking and emphasizing fear tonight, and because I think it's something that a lot of people are feeling right now in our community. Maybe someone's job has been impacted by recent actions from the president, they don't know if they will have a way to support their family. Maybe their kid's identity and ability to find healthcare has been threatened. Maybe they've been subject of remarks at a grocery store simply because their skin isn't white. For whatever the reason, I just, I wanna emphasize again that like, we see you, and we support you, and we want you here, and we want you safe. And you are an important part of our community. Another thing I'd like to talk about is, today, the county dismantled their DEIA committee because, in the words of one county commissioner, that's what the president told them to do. I wanna be clear, the president doesn't get to decide or stop the important work that we are doing in our community. To have a city that works to include all voices as part of its processes and decision-making is not a series of bad words called DEI. It is a sign of a city that wants to be a city for everyone. None of the work that our Equity Department or the Human Rights and Equity Commission does divides us, it expands our views and makes us better. We will continue this work because it is the right thing to do. And if you don't agree or don't understand what this work is, I would like to offer myself up to have a conversation. Let's talk about this. Maybe we won't come to an understanding, but let's try. Let's try to understand each other. We've had enough division over the last few weeks. Like, you can find my information on the council webpage, please contact me. And then finally, I'd just like to urge everyone, whether you voted for the president or you didn't, whether you voted for me or you didn't, remember, we've only had a few weeks of a four-year term for both me and for the president. Let's take a breath, let's remember our common values, and let's think about what we love about this city and what we would change. And let's try and work together on that and drown out the noise that we are hearing from Washington as much as we can. And let's just get back to making Bend better.
Thank you everyone for your comments. I really appreciate how aligned we are and that we can stand up for our community in this way. So I just appreciate that a lot. We are moving now into council action and reports. We have moved up to the end of the meeting to the beginning, so I will stall a little bit while everyone gets their calendars together. I don't think we have, the subcommittees haven't met yet, so we don't have that. There is a letter that, very timely, came in this afternoon shortly before the meeting, that was from the Climate Mayors Group that would like localities to join an amicus brief on the lawsuit that is trying to stop the federal funding freeze as illegal. So I forwarded that to staff and just wanted to make sure council was in agreement that we should look into signing on to that as a locality that would definitely be affected by that. Okay, see an agreement on that? Thank you. Yep, and we don't have any appointments at this time. Councillor Franzosa, I think we start with you. If there's anything you'd like to report out. It may not be, we're just getting started here with our liaison, so not everyone has had a chance to meet you.
Yeah, I don't have to impersonate.
Okay. Councillor Mendez?
I attended the Oregon Metropolitan Planning Organization Consortium meeting, which is useful because it's a way to hear about what kinds of transportation challenges other areas across the state are also experiencing. And there was a discussion of legislative priorities, there was a lot of talk about support for transit. There's been some interesting pieces of legislation that are opposed to each other on this issue. I'm hoping that we will see the one that funds transit at a higher rate prevail. I also got a chance to tour the water reclamation facility, which is gonna be undergoing a new facility planned for expansion, planning for the future. Tours are available to the public once per month. It's a little bit smelly in places, but I otherwise highly recommend it. Very interesting to learn all about where our water goes even after you're done using it.
Yeah. Good way to put it, okay.
And then I also got a chance to attend the Season of Nonviolence talk by Reverend Nontomi Naomi Tutu, which I think I'll leave others to also share about. So, thank you.
Thank you councillor Mendez. And that reminded me how to note that I forgot to get to here, just to state that it is Black History Month. It's still Black History Month. Every month is also Black History Month, and also a good time to learn about that, but that we will have an official proclamation in our next February meeting, just so that you folks know. And that there are some events, and COCC particularly has the Season of Nonviolence and Black History Month events that you can find on their website that are coming up this month and the next couple of weeks. So just wanna make sure I mention that. Okay, councillor Riley?
I attended the Core Area Advisory Board meeting, I think it was last week, and it was an overview of their role and also talking some about the potential to rethink a little bit, the focus of that board and becoming a little more focused on urban renewal across the whole community. So it was just interesting, good to get to know some of the new members, they were getting oriented, hear their passion for the Central District in particular, but also their openness and willingness to talk about, their willingness to talk about thinking a little bit bigger and how we use tools across the whole community. So it looks like a group of people that we're gonna have engaged here. I also went to the talk by Reverend Tutu, and she talked a lot about an African proverb, that goes something like this, "A person is a person through other people," that you learn about and become more human and show your humanity and how you relate to and what you do with other people. And I think it's especially relevant given what we've just talked about, and as we reflect on how people that are different than us and how that shapes their humanity, but also shapes our own individual humanity. I thought it was a very inspiring talk.
Good takeaway, yeah. Okay, councillor Perkins?
Like my fellow councillors, I've been doing a lot of different goal-setting events, some to some with the public. We just came out of goal-setting yesterday afternoon. Some real highlights from the last couple of weeks, I was able to speak at the swearing in for our Congresswoman Janelle Bynum, who chose Bend as the place to do the Oregon Swearing In. My daughter also got to be there and help her be sworn in, and she was super impressed, but in a very 12-year-old way. So we couldn't know she was impressed by that. And that was a really wonderful event. I was also, last week, was able to introduce the Reverend Nontomi Naomi Tutu for the Season of Nonviolence event. And I think it was just an incredibly inspiring talk. And one of the interesting things that we got out of it is, when I introduced her, I said apartheid, and she said that one of the things that we do is, the way you're supposed to say it is apart hate, because the idea is that they're keeping people apart in hate. And so now I will always call it hate. And the Human Rights and Equity Commission met last week, as you can probably, and I think there was, we just took some time to just be with each other and sit there and just be in community. But they're really anxious to keep working on their work plan and came up with some really incredible ways of engaging in our growth plan going forward. And so I'm looking forward to seeing those be implemented. And I think I'll just leave it at that.
I've also been going to a lot of meetings around goal-setting. I thought the one that was, we all were at, was the meeting with our committees, and I just thought a lot of great information was exchanged, and really look forward to how we improve communication amongst committees and with us and stuff. I just thought that was really helpful for me to hear directly from our various committee heads. I also went to the Season of Nonviolence, and I just, everyone pretty much said it, but yeah, just the topic of apartheid and just how relevant it is to our times, where we don't wanna go, and how we can all come together in humanity, so.
The goal-setting that we did, one of the things we heard, those of us that ran most recently on the campaign trail, was that voices were not heard, and you were not impacting the way the city were responding to your voices. And I just want to assure you that the surveys that you took, that the public outreach events that you attended, and that the emails that you wrote really did inform and continue to inform the vector that we're choosing for the city. So thank you for that, that's all.
All right, thanks councillor. Looking back on my calendars, last, now it seems like it was forever ago, but last week I got Salem for the Leo City's Board Meeting, and the next day was City Day, which lots of, the most they've ever had actually, are folks from various cities around the state coming to Salem to lobby on city issues and shared issues. We also got to do a press conference, so there's now a article with me talking about really big pipes in it, which is pretty cool. But that was, the biggest assist for us was around infrastructure, housing, our shelter funding, and just keeping all of that going. As we know, it's a top community priority. The transportation conversation is shaping up, it's still pretty nebulous, but was able to make some good connections with our legislators and other legislators. Had a joint meeting with our small group with Bend Parks and Rec that same week. They were raising concerns around their programs at schools, their employees, so talked about that with them. I think our values are aligned on this, and we're hoping to talk with them and other local leaders about continuing to talk together in the same voice. The school district also sent out a message, right? So it's good to see our local governments aligned, and we just want people to know that we're all on the same page and hoping to stand up for our community. And then I attended the, there's a Lunar New Year slash Spring Festival event this weekend with our Asian and Pacific Islander community. That was great, there was a lot of folks there, and it was good to just see people laughing and having fun and being together. But it was not without the specter of what's going on with immigration right now, but that was great to be in community and make those connections with people. So that'll be it for me. Okay, Morgan. Do we have any visitor section sign-ups?
We do not.
Okay, mark it down, February 5th, 2025. Okay, I won't do my spiel, and we will move right on to the consent agenda, which is item number four.
Melanie, I'd like to move something out of the consent agenda.
Yes, which one?
The Agreement for Work at the Water Reclamation Facility.
Okay, so D, okay. Is there a motion to approve without that item?
Move to approve items A, B, and C.
Second. Okay, move to approve items A, B, and C on the consent agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, can we have, Mike, you're getting ready to come up and present on D. And Morgan, can you D for us?
Council's asked to authorize an agreement with Mel and Sky Inc. for the Water Reclamation Facility Landscape Improvement Project in an amount not to exceed $383,316.10.
Good evening, Mayor Potem, councillors. Good to see you all. Councillor Platt, Franzosa, good to meet you. Mike Bittner, Water Services Director here for the city, here to expand on the Water Reclamation Facility Landscape Improvement Project. I'm gonna dive right in here. I have put together a slide deck with mostly visuals to just give you a sense of what the facility used to look like, what it looks like today, and really what our plans are for the future, okay? I started with this slide here and this photo that staff found for me, because I thought it was really appropriate. This is our water reclamation facility under construction a few years ago. I think I have my laser pointer here, I think it's working. But I just wanted to highlight a couple of things here happening in this photo. You can see there's a big crane under construction that's operating right here. It's working on our aeration basins at the facility. But really where the water reclamation facility expansion improvements began about 13 years ago, really started in this area right here, around our primary clarifiers. I'm gonna highlight the primary clarifiers, the secondary clarifiers, and a few of the areas in this, at the site that are gonna receive a lot of work through this contract. And then I'll go through and show you a couple of zoomed-in images of specifically what they look like. But during that expansion, this area was highly disturbed. We went from two clarifiers to a third clarifier, plus this pumping building here. And then on the northern side of the facility, we have three clarifiers here on the secondary side. We didn't add a fourth, but we cleared room for a fourth and prepared for the future. We also added this blower building which blows massive amounts of air into the aeration basin, really stimulating that biological activity that councillor Mendez was commenting on here just a little bit ago. And so those two items are captured in the base bid of this contract, and I wanted to really highlight those. Those are really the key critical elements that we're trying to accomplish here. By updating the landscape there, we really solved some erosion control issues as well as some dust control issues which are all out in here in some of the next slide. Two other areas that are also involved in this scope are really this area right here on the far right of your screen. This is really, this is bid alternate one that's listed in the bid. This is the admin and the, excuse me, the administration buildings. And then bid alternate number four is the landscaping that goes right in front of these digesters right here. This isn't a terribly good photo of it here. It shows some mature trees, and some of that's left. I have another photo here in the slide that shows you just the state of repair that's necessary moving forward. I'm gonna dive into the primary clarifiers, then I'll go secondary, and then I'll show some slides on these two areas. And then we can maybe stop for a Q and A. I can answer any questions you have, and I'm happy to double back with any of these slides. So here is really the phased approach that we sought when we dove into this two years ago with our landscape architect. We realized pretty quickly that this is a pretty massive site, and really anything that we're gonna do here was gonna be pretty substantial, especially from a dollar amount. When you look at rock, riprap, any more plant material or seed, all of those things are generally pretty affordable from a landscape standpoint. But when you spend them out, when you spread them out over 20, 30 acres, it really starts to add up. And so the base bid items here are the bulk of the cost of this contract that you're seeing. So, just to highlight a couple things, so here are those three clarifiers, and in the next few slides, I have a few pictures of what they look like. A, what the landscape plans are outlining for the future. The area in the north here, this is very similar in scope, but one area that I just wanted to highlight was, this was the blower building that I mentioned that blows the big air, those massive amounts of air into the aeration basins here. One of the key things that we're really trying to solve here is some dust issues. As this is a pretty vacant, excuse me, a pretty open parcel right here, to the west of us, further out here, is even more open. And so we get a lot of wind from the north, from the west side of the facility, that kicks up a lot of dirt, and that really is impacting our blower facility. So there's really a need for dust control in this specific area, and then erosion control really around the actual aeration basins where we have some serious elevation change, and that'll show up in some of the pictures I show here. Again, bid alternates one and bid alternates four are also a part of this package. When I looked at the original scope, and we broke this up into multiple bid alternates, we realized that we weren't gonna be able to do everything. We wanted to focus on the mission-critical things that were really critical to the operation of the facility, and so we broke those into base bid, the base bid items that you're seeing. But I also instructed staff to see how much else we could get done within a reasonable dollar amount. And really, bid alternate one is really the entrance to the facility, and really that first impression you receive when you drive up to this facility. We do give tours pretty regularly for this. Outside of the council visit from time to time, we entertain students and plan to entertain a lot more students in the future, typically between 100 and 150 students per year. We see that increasing. Generally, having the front of the facility look halfway decent is something that we wanted to do. And then bid alternate four here, again, was in front of the landscaping that was gonna be replaced in front of those digesters. So I'll dive in here and show you a few pictures. So on the primary clarifiers, a couple of photos, one photo here that has a couple of images on it, on the far, the early 1980s version. This is what we started with, really grass-intense lawn-intense landscape at an industrial site, which is really what we don't want, we don't need that. And the, on the left, is really what we're left with today and what really needs some work. So on the left-hand side here, this is where we typically see erosion issues. This is elevated about 10 to 15 feet outside of the flat grade out here. Really what the landscape plans call for here, and I'll show you just a snippet of one of the plan sheets here in just a minute, calls for rock stabilization over here where we have a lot of steep grades. So this is primarily like six-inch riprap boulders. And then on the top, on the flat areas here for dust control, we do have an irrigation system that's gonna be rehabilitated and replaced up here. And then these will be seeded with what's called a dryland seed mix. And so this is a plant palette of about eight different seeds, columbine, lupine, several different grasses. I actually have a plant schedule in here if you're really interested. But the idea is that this grass gets irrigated once per month, on average, maybe once or twice during those peak season months, June, July, and August. And then after two to three years of establishment, it gets cut once per year. So this isn't a lawn that we're establishing, it's really more about erosion control and doing it in a way that's more pollinator-friendly, that's more high-desert-friendly, but really trying to find that fine line between an industrial facility that doesn't need a whole lot of landscaping and something that needs some functional landscaping around erosion control and dust control. A couple more photos of the primary clarifiers, so this is what it looks like today. So this area here would be irrigated with that dryland mix. These areas here in the slope would be rock and riprap to stabilize the soil. This is one of the existing clarifiers, and you can see some of the old grass coming through. And occasionally, we have some erosion issues that staff deal on an as-needed basis. Continuing on, this is just a quick look at the actual landscape plan. I don't expect you to pick up a lot of detail here, but again, this is the rock stabilization, this is the dryland seed mix area here, you can see the different shading. And as I go to the secondary clarifiers that were on the north side of the property, the northwest side of the property, here are those three clarifiers. Now, we didn't add a clarifier, so there isn't a fourth one, but we did clear that space up here, and we adjusted our fencing line way out to the west here to accommodate the construction of this blower facility. In total, this is an area here that would be, again, some rock scape around the slope areas for stabilization. And again, on the right side here, you're seeing an old image from probably the mid-1980s where this was really, the intent was to go grass all from curb all the way to concrete to the infrastructure, infrastructure, which is certainly not what we want to do. We really don't want to create a maintenance exercise for our staff. Couple pictures from the secondary clarifier area. So on the left, some areas that need some slope stabilization, leftover from construction, and on the right side, I hate to say, we're actually doing a pretty good job on the, the slope stabilization. The problem is those are mostly noxious weeds, and we need to replace those generally with that same dry land mix, okay? So here's a similar look, similar cut sheet from the landscape plan. I won't go into too much detail on that. The two, I didn't have a lot of great photos for the admin building, but just to the, just to the left of the admin building and the digester buildings, this is a snapshot of what the existing landscapes look like. So some workable landscapes, some mature trees, some mature shrubs that we can certainly keep in the mix, but the contract here would update the irrigation, improve the irrigation, which was largely cut off during the construction, rock mulch, and then add different shrubs that tie in with the existing plant material. I've got two landscape sheets here. I'll just zip through. I won't get into those unless you really want to look at the plant palette and look closely, but otherwise, I thought I'd just stop there and see what questions you might have, and I'm happy to go back and, and get into some of the details.
All right. Thanks for that explanation, Mike. Just those are questions?
Yeah, just in the memo that came through, it said something about using some of the reclaimed water from the facility. Can you describe how that's?
Yeah, yeah, that's one of the really neat things about this facility. The landscape irrigation system will be served with recycled water or reclaimed water. So that's taken off of, of the, that's taken off of the outflow before it gets to Hatfield Ponds that you can go out and walk around. So before that water actually gets there, there is some that is plung back into the facility that's used as processed water that we can use for landscape irrigation. So we're not using groundwater. We're not using surface water directly from the watershed. This is a really renewable resource as long as we use it wisely. But, but yeah, and then it will be a purple pipe system, so to speak. And so when you go out there, you'll see sprinkler heads that aren't black on top. They're purple and purple valve box covers. And so part of the intent here, or a side benefit, Counselor, is that we'll be able to educate landscape and irrigation contractors on really the best practices for installing a reclaimed irrigation waters, irrigation system with reclaimed water. The purple indicates that it's non-potable, and you don't drink, and there's additional signage that goes with it, so. Does that help?
Very cool. Any other questions on the specifics on this, for this contract?
I like all the wastewater talk tonight.
I know. You just watch it on there. Okay.
I move to authorize an agreement with Mountain Sky Inc. for the water reclamation facility landscape improvement project in an amount not to exceed $383,316 and 10 cents. Second.
All right. Move by Counselor Ren, second by Counselor Mendez. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you, Mike. Appreciate that. All right. Onto item number five.
Initiate vacation of a partially improved portion of Romayne Village Way right-of-way.
Good evening, councilors. My name's Michelle Patrick. I'm an associate planner in the Community and Economic Development Department, and the item on the agenda for you today is a right-of-way vacation for an initiation of Romayne Village Way. This is the vicinity map of the area. This is a little far back. I have another slide that's a little more detailed, but the area in red is the segment in question that appears to be vacated. So this is just south of Murphy Road. It's a little bit hard to read, and then just west of the Parkway or South Highway 97, and just east of Ridge Drive. The right-of-way vacation is coming before you as an initiation rather than a petition, as this was part of a memorandum of understanding or an MOU between the city of Bend and the adjacent property owner in 2021. And this is ultimately coordinated in an effort to locate the southwest sewer basin main sewer line in alignment where the Romayne Village Way is shown on the Murphy Crossing refinement plan street map. In accordance with the MOU, the, the property owner has dedicated new right-of-way for Romayne Village Way to the south, which is in alignment with the Murphy Crossing refinement plan, and the city has since installed the southwest sewer basin main sewer line in that dedicated area. Ultimately, the MOU has been executed as outlined, with the exception of this right-of-way vacation. So this is just zooming in a little bit. The area in red is, and then the area in green is the area that was dedicated in 2021, and that is also where the southwest sewer basin main sewer line is located now. If counsel directs staff to process this vacation, it will be coming before you in four to five weeks for a public hearing with a little more detail, and notice will be provided in accordance with our standard processes.
All right. Questions?
I move to initiate the vacation and request staff to schedule a public hearing to vacate a portion of Romayne Village Way.
Second.
All right. Move by Counselor Morris, second by Counselor Mendez. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thanks very much. Item number six.
Adopt a resolution supporting the downtown Bend, downtown Bend Business Associations submit an application to the state of Oregon to become a designated Main Street community in the Oregon Main Street Program.
Good evening, counsel. My name's Cyrus Mooney, City's Business Advocate, joined here by Rachel O'Rourke, who's the Executive Director of the Downtown Bend Business Association. Mostly an introduction for Counselor Platt and Counselor Francosa. I don't think you've gotten acquainted yet. We have a very great working relationship, and we're able to renew the Economic Improvement District contract this last summer, and part of that contract negotiation was having the DBBA get a little bit more involved with the Main Street America program. So that's what we're here to talk about tonight. Just a little bit background and context as to the relationship that the city has with the DBA. We go through process and a scope of work that's aligned with the state statute of having an established economic improvement district. So there are specific functions in which the DBB needs to utilize those funds through that scope of work, mostly around maintenance, marketing, and events, beautification efforts in downtown with a proposed boundary. So that is a little bit of the background there, and I will pass it over to Rachel.
See you guys and meet a few of you. As Cyrus mentioned, we are, we've been involved with Main Street America, I think, for quite a while, but on a very small scale. Very few cities actually have, all right, so the benefits I'm gonna go over today. One of them is increased funding opportunities and grants. This is the one I'm most excited about. One of our big goals for this year, for the next couple of years, is to diversify our funding. Most of our funding comes from the EID funds, which is great, but we would love to have its own grant that we can apply for, but it gives us access and notification of plenty of other grants from a state and from a national level. A stronger local economy. They have proven strategies to help boost local businesses, attract visitors, and drive downtown vibrancy. We've already started following their four-point approach, which involves design, economic vitality, organization, and promotion, which will help guide us to reach that, that level of economic growth that we want. Historic preservation and beautification, resources to enhance downtown aesthetics while maintaining its unique charm, and it does this by giving us strategies to use our historic assets to drive economic growth. Architectural and design support for building owners who are looking to restore their buildings, facade improvements and adaptive reuse. They have expert-led workshops and webinar trainings on preservation, best practices, and then grant write-in policy updates. Expert support and best practices. We have access to nationwide experts' training and successful case studies. They have a lot of networking meetings where we get to network with other leaders from downtown and other main streets within Oregon, both in person and online, and tons of access to trainings, not only for our board but for employees as well. Enhanced community engagement. This is already a goal of the DBA. We want to have a collaboration with businesses, residents, and city leadership. This is just another level of accountability because we have to submit how we're actually incorporating this in our annual report to them. And then proven success nationwide. This has been around, Main Street America's been around since 1980, and they've worked with over 1,200 communities, have leveraged their resources to drive economic success and downtown vitality. So part of this application is what we need, the resolution of support, as well as a letter of support and commitment from the mayor, and with that, we can submit our final application and hopefully become a designated member and get all of those benefits that I just mentioned.
Thank you, Rachel. Any questions on this? It's a great step forward, and I love the idea of diversifying the funding streams and getting all this sort of support. It's really great.
I move to adopt the resolution supporting the downtown Bend Business Associations submit of an application to the state of Oregon to become a designated Main Street community in the Oregon Main Street Program.
All right. Move by Counselor Perkins, second by Counselor Platt. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. What are we on now? Item?
Seven. Adopt a resolution authorizing the Community and Economic Development Director to grant land use planning approval extensions for housing projects.
Good evening, Mayor. Counsel, she hasn't familiarity with this. We talked about it at your last meeting, the King under Eric's business, and then I talked for a few minutes about it. And this is to provide an opportunity for permit holders to get a year extension. Right now, under a normal process, a development approval has a two-year planning approval window, and, but there is an ability to have that extended, and I'm just gonna read a section of the code because it's pretty explanatory. The Community and Economic Development Director may grant one or more extensions if authorized by a city council resolution, which recognizes the citywide need for a limited duration extension not to exceed two years. So I was here last January, not a month ago, but January of 2024, with a similar request. We had been approached by quite a number of developers who were running up against their two-year duration of approval. We also had some, a letter from Central Oregon Builders Association that advocated that as well. And after discussions with the council, it was adopted, or the resolution was authorized. It gave me the authority to do a one-year extension, and there was a window of opportunity for people to apply. So that resolution went into effect on passage in January of 2024. It was in effect until the end of June of 24. So people could apply during that period for a one-year extension. So what I'm proposing is a similar action tonight with a little bit of a different twist to it, and that is that this would be limited to housing projects. The feedback that I've gotten from developers, and I've been approached by multiple ones that have housing projects that have a planning approval, and in many instances have building permits that are either under review or are approved and ready to pick up. They're just not ready to get their project going quite yet. We're still seeing some persistence of those same issues of higher interest rates, supply chain issues, and just market uncertainty right now. And so I think it would be a good idea to allow another one-year extension, which is authorized under the code because it could, it does say not to exceed two years. So we would still be consistent with that. And so that's why I'm here tonight.
Colm, would you mind just sharing with counsel the volume of folks that we had take advantage of the one-year extension?
I don't have that information with me. It was probably in the neighborhood of 30 to 40.
I took it last time. Okay.
I took it last time.
And were they all housing projects or?
No, there's a, a good majority, or a good number of them were, but they were not all. Although the, the folks who have approached me and I've met with, and we've tried to strategize ways to keep their permits alive, have all been housing projects for the last number of months.
Yeah.
And housing, is that just very loosely defined?
All the projects we've talked about.
Housing units doesn't?
Hundred percent housing, although some that took advantage of the last time around, who were likely gonna take advantage of it again, or mixed use podium building.
Yeah, I mean, that's fine.
Anything that has attached to it?
Any dwelling.
It has a dwelling unit in it.
Yeah, it's considered a housing project.
Yeah, okay.
So the way it would work, it would be effective upon passage, and then this time instead of January to June, would be everywhere, similar six-month window.
Yeah. Any other questions or motion?
I move to adopt a resolution recognizing the citywide need to allow planning approval extensions for housing developments and authorize the Community and Economic Development Director to issue a one-year extension. Second.
All right. Move by Counselor Riley, second by Counselor Mendez. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thanks, Colm.
Thank you. Thanks, Colm.
All right. Onto item number eight.
Authorize an agreement between the city of Bend and Seron Biotech LLC for a Bend Enterprise Zone property tax exemption on new capital investment for up to five years.
Hello again. Different item, talking about an enterprise zone agreement for a five-year tax abatement, which is an extended version of the enterprise zone agreement for Seron Biotech. A little bit of background on the Bend Enterprise Zone. The enterprise is a program that's administered through Business Oregon, which is the state agency for economic development. To the right, you have a map of the locations within the UGB, and just directly adjacent to the south of the UGB, where the Bend area enterprise zone is located. Traded sector businesses are the only businesses that are eligible to apply for the enterprise zone agreements. They have to meet certain criteria, including employment levels, minimum employment levels, first source hiring agreements, which is through the local workforce agency that we have here in Bend, and this is for a five-year exemption as I referenced, so they'll need to hit those minimum salary requirements as well, which are the 2020 county numbers. Some of the benefits that Bend has realized from the enterprise zone to date, since 2016, 24 companies have entered these agreements, around 317 million in local facility investments have been made or investment plans, and 600 or more new or expected employees. Specific to this application on the right is a site map of where the location is. It's in northeast Bend on Leighton Avenue. Seron anticipates having 20 new employees as a result of this investment, and over $6 million in new construction as well as equipment that would be included with this agreement. Some background on accountability measures to make sure that businesses are adhering to the scope of the agreement. So if a business were not to fulfill all the requirements, they would need to submit written notice to the zone sponsor and the zone manager, which is ECO, Economic Development for Central Oregon. So if they were aware that they weren't meeting the criteria, they would need to submit that written notice proactively to us. They would then be assessed for all of the taxes that they were abated within that agreement period with the county assessor, and depending on the situation, there could be a 20% penalty added to that as well. And obviously, in future years, they would not receive that tax abatement.
They have to self-initiate a report of non-compliance. Is there anything on that's done to ensure compliance annually? Or is there a report that they file that shows that they're complying?
There is annually. They need to.
So there's a verification, essentially?
Right. They work with ECO and Oregon Employment Department to make sure that they're meeting salary requirements, the employment requirements, and that is submitted to Business Oregon.
Cyrus, thanks for your presentation. So I appreciate that this is five years because I feel like I sometimes worry about this being too long-lived and undermining the, the services that, that we provide. But in this case, we also have another way of mitigating the impact on the school district. Could you elaborate a little bit more about how that works?
Yes. House bill, I believe, 2009 was passed in 2023, and we recently established that school support fee that is 15% of the abated taxes in years four and five. So, for example, in this application, in years four and five of Seron's abatement, 15% of the taxes that they are not paying for would go to the Bend Land School District.
I think we did that policy a couple meetings ago.
Yeah.
With Ali.
December.
Yeah. Yep. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Move to authorize an agreement in substantially deformed presented between the city of Bend and Seron Biotech LLC for Bend Enterprise Zone property tax exemptions on new capital investment at 63020 Leighton Avenue for up to five consecutive years on the terms described in the agreement.
Second.
Okay. Motion by Counselor Francosa, second by Counselor Mendez. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So the city managers report.
I'm gonna share my screen and include some information, I think, that is on a lot of folks' minds right now with, which is the traffic.
Storm you're talking about.
The perfect storm, yes, aptly named. Put this in full mode here. We have some messaging that we're going to be putting out tonight to media, and I wanted to, to share with counsel as well. So you see some of the messages. It's a little hard to read on this screen. I'll send it out via email too, so you can see this. But you know, there's, the perfect storm really is the weather this week, and of course, the closure that was, is for the intersection of Wall and Only as part of that project, which is, there's a lot of elements to that project. It's a bike and pedestrian project as well as a sewer and a water project. It's critical infrastructure. We have only a few crossings to the river, so this is one that it's a very painful project. It needs to happen. Aging infrastructure and improved safety at that intersection. Of course, we have other intersections that need to be improved all up and down the, in the Midtown area, Franklin. We've recently had the Greenwood project. So because there's so few crossings, it is painful when there is a disruption. And then added to that is the winter weather that we've been seeing, and the, I think I talked to the police chief, there was 40 crashes that our, a police department responded to in the last two days, and that is all over town. So I think folks are just experiencing a lot of gridlock, and I just want to just name it. That's what's happening. There is nothing fun about that. I think probably we all have some maybe personal stories of, or stories from friends that are, have struggled to get across town. It is a real thing. So to make things easier, what we have begun doing, which is already in place, is we, ODOT maintains the signals here in the city for the city of Bend. So we've adjusted those signals on Greenwood and Wall. We're also adjusting them at Greenwood and Bond, and then Greenwood at Third Street. So those are in process right now. The Greenwood and Wall has been adjusted, so that will allow for more traffic to be given, some of the directional changes. There's minimal traffic coming into downtown from the north, so letting more traffic go east-west, right? We're doing more of that as we go down the train, the, the chain, so that should help. I also just want to put a message out to our community. Please allow yourself more extra time, especially as it's snowing. And then we're providing some suggestions for routes, additional routes to, to make, to meet your daily needs. Mount, suggesting Mount Washington, about the Newport and Greenwood Avenue through downtown, and then Franklin through downtown, and then Reed Market, south end of town. This is just part of our ongoing challenge as we build out our system, which is a big part of the geo-bond is to improve east-west connect. But in order to get to that end state, there's a lot of disruption to get there. So I wish I could say that just get through this, and it'll just all be better, but there's more to come. We have Franklin upcoming next year. We have, of course, Reed Market. We have interchange work at Murphy. It's, it is disruptive, and I just want to acknowledge that, but it is really an attempt to address community needs that the voters approved in, and with a passage of the general obligation bond. But we're doing our best so we can help folks just navigate through these changes, and we're gonna continue to monitor, look for this messaging to go out, as I said, tonight, and more messaging to help our public. I also just want to remind folks that the weather, unfortunately, we're in kind of a bit of a cold snap here. We have another round of snow that's predicted to come tomorrow. So just also really encourage folks to stay home if you can and, and avoid a lot of travel right now. And it's looking like maybe towards the end of, or towards mid next week, things will improve weather-wise, but in the meantime, we have all these things colliding right now.
Yeah.
This project is a synergy project. Like, we have water and sewer in addition to the, the sort of surface improvements to the roadway that if we didn't do them all at one time, we'd close the road multiple times. So that's what we're trying to.
We're trying to, and we're also trying. Exactly. And these are, this is aging infrastructure that is in need of repair, and our goal was to get this done before the summer, busy summer season. So the intent is to have this intersection in all of Portland that has been fairly torn up for quite some time to be completed prior to Memorial Day weekend. There'll still be some closures on Only going east, but that intercept, the intent is to open up that intersection up by then, so.
Did I get that right?
Yeah. My anecdotal advice is I've noticed that, so coming down Reed Market. Yeah. My anecdotal advice is I've noticed that, so coming down Reed Market where there's roundabouts, there'll be a long line of cars, but it is moving. And it was a long line of cars, but it only took me eight minutes to get up to the roundabout. Where the lights are, it seems way more frustrating. So if you can take a route that gets you through a roundabout, avoids lights, that might help, but it is pretty tough.
And we have staff here if there's questions on either the, our snow removal efforts or this project.
We're doing what we can.
Is there one question? Did you say, and maybe you said this in your comments here. Is Portland Avenue, is that work gonna be done at the same time as the intersection opens up?
Yeah, so there'll be a new, newly paved sidewalks, intersection improvements at Ninth and Portland. And that is all taking place this, between now and Memorial Day weekend.
That will help a lot.
Yeah.
Just appreciate everybody's patience and adaptability. You know it's gonna be rough. But I think as we figure out some new routes, hopefully things will calm down a little bit as we adjust.
Okay, anything else, Eric?
That's it.
Wow, okay. It's like barely 8:00 PM. All right, I think that's it for, we don't have our council stuff. We did that up top, so I think we're done with our meeting. Okay, thanks, everybody.